That's risk-free and flip.
Hi, everyone. Sorry for the delay. It'll be a few more minutes before we get to get started. Just waiting for some key personnel to run the meeting, so hang tight and thanks for being here. 13th Planning Commission meeting. We'll open up the session at 7:12 PM and we'll start with a rule call.
Chair Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Devine.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Liel.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
And next, the salute to the flag. I'll go ahead and lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get on to administrative business, I'm wondering if there's any public comments for the administrative business?
And Chair Berman, for the public's benefit, I do want to make mention of a recommendation staff will make with respect to the motion on approval of Order of Agenda. Staff's analysis of potential conflicts of interest related to item number three on the agenda is ongoing. As a result, we're not prepared to present the item to the commission tonight. So our recommendation from staff is to include a revision to the agenda to remove item number three in any motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So with that noted, are there any comments in regards to the administrative business? Which is solely Order of Agenda, approval of minutes, which are none, and designation of liaison, which is none?
Want to give a speaker card?
Typically yes, but please state your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Patrick Miyaki, I'm attorney at Hanson Bridget, I'm the general counsel for North Coast County Water District. And as public attorney, I have three items actually, the item, vice microphone.
And actually, if your comment is regarding the public hearing item, that is not, right now is not the time to provide that comment.
Great, so can I provide that comment because a line of hearing is going to be pulled from the agenda?
Okay.
Chair Berman, now would be an appropriate time to make comment on regarding pulling it from the agenda.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, please.
I don't get into this.
Okay, sure.
So I'm pulling this, so I can work.
Yeah, Mr. Miyaki, just give us a moment to troubleshoot the microphone, if you would, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Test, test, working now?
Yep.
Great, okay. All right, so I will introduce myself again. My name is Patrick Miyaki. I'm an attorney at Hanson Bridget. I'm the general counsel for the North Coast County Water District. The item regarding that you're going to pull from the agenda is the public hearing, which I understand. I just wanted to make a comment to let you know that we are very disappointed that this item is going to be pulled from the agenda. We have our whole district team that's here. We have board members, we have our general manager, we have our legal counsel, we have our consultants who are ready to do this. We understand that things come up, totally understand, but we want to let you know that we are here, we're ready. We know that this was agendized, we submitted a letter, and so all that's in the record. So we look forward to the opportunity that we can come back before the Planning Commission for our public hearing, and hopefully that will be very soon. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any call-in comments?
There are no call-in comments at this time.
All right, then I'll close the public comment for administrative business and move on to approval of the Order of Agenda.
And Chair, good evening again. Planning Director Christian Murdock, just a reminder to, staff's recommendation is to remove item number three in any motion to approve the Order of Agenda.
And on that note, myself and I believe a few other commissioners legally have to recuse themselves from this item. I need to recuse myself due to a financial conflict of interest, so I will not be voting on the approval of Order of Agenda as it relates to this item.
I will also recuse myself from the vote to, of the approval of the Order of Agenda due to ownership of real property within proximity of the location of that item. Commissioner Liel.
Thank you, Commissioner Liel. Commissioner Devine.
Apologies, I'm newer on this commission and I'm just trying to understand as far as the amount of recusals versus presence. Is it because we're missing one commissioner?
So with the six commissioners present, two commissioners, Chair Berman and Commissioner Liel, have indicated they intend to recuse themselves from taking action on the motion related to the Order of Agenda. That would leave four commissioners eligible to participate in the vote, which is a quorum of the commission which allows the motion to be considered.
Understood. Thank you. And if anyone has a motion, perhaps incorporating staff's recommendation to pull item three from the agenda, I am happy to take it. Vice Chair Hauser.
Item, I had Rice.
Sorry. Commissioner Godwin.
I move we remove item three from the agenda.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Godwin, to approve the Order of Agenda with staff's recommendation to remove item three, correct?
Correct.
Great. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? So we have a motion on the table. Perhaps there's a counter motion or we're looking for a second?
I guess I would seek a little bit more clarity on that staff's still working on the project. What is the reason for the delay? Is there a little bit more information available for that, just so we can have a little bit more clarity?
So Chair Berman and Commissioner Wright, as you know from your training as a planning commissioner, there are certain circumstances known as conflicts of interest that can prevent a planning commissioner from participating in an action on an item. We are still evaluating a potential conflict of interest from one of the planning commissioners. And so we are not prepared to have the item be heard tonight as a result of that because that analysis is still ongoing.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table. Looking for a second for that motion or perhaps a counter motion?
So if the four commissioners here are available, one is still being considered for recusal. That's what I'm understanding? That's why we can't bring this to the table?
Correct.
Okay.
Is the commissioner that's being considered for recusal still eligible to vote on whether we pulled the item or not?
Yes. Commissioner Wright.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. For those who are not abstaining, please vote.
And that motion passes four in favor and two recused.
Thank you, so that passes. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have no minutes. Designation of liaison, we have no designation required. And on to oral communications. So this portion of the meeting is open to the public to provide a comment on items that are not agendized. You'll have three minutes to speak. I have one comment card and it's Cliff Lawrence.
Good evening. My name's Cliff Lawrence. I'm resident of the West Fairmont area. Tonight's my debut of my petition to regarding the quarry. And I understand that we may have a tentative date for that hearing as June 5th. Probably will be postponed, but tonight I'd like to at least start to expose you to some of my thought on that. And I hope that in the coming weeks you see quite a bit of me. So my first question is about the quarry EIR. Has there ever been a public hearing on the draft? It's noted that in the final EIR that it's mentioned several times that this is assuming that there is no development. But who really believes that there is not a development in the works for this? And to have this document for this serious consideration is a question. Will a future new EIR be required when the development plan comes forward? What changes to the final EIR would be sufficient to cause the plan to be recirculated? Who says the quarry requires remediation? Who says it doesn't? Who wants to see 161 trucks a day for four years belching their exhaust into our beautiful Pacific air? Who wants to see schoolchildren's traffic challenged by 805 trucks a week? That's 1,610 trucks, times a truck would pass through the intersection of Valamar every week for four years. I call this the quarry quagmire and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Having no more comment cards up here for the public comment period for oral communications, I'm wondering if there's anyone online who has a comment?
We have one caller, Jim Kramer. I will allow you to talk.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
We could hear you, yes.
Thank you. I'm going to assume that because the item was, because item three was no longer on the agenda, that if I have something I'd like to say, I could be allowed to go ahead and say it. Now, I realize that's a little tricky. Don't start my clock yet. But actually, I'm hoping my comments would be more helpful in advance than on the meeting night when they will be concerned.
I'm sorry, that is.
It's not on the agenda, but I should be allowed to speak on it, should I?
The opportunity to speak on whether or not this item was on the agenda was.
No, no, I'm not speaking on that. I'm making a comment on an item which is not on the agenda.
I guess I'll look to the city attorney to see if this is allowed or not.
Since the public commenter is not making comments on the Order of Agenda and it's no longer on the agenda, it's appropriate.
Okay. All right, please continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I realize this is extraordinary, but as I say, I'm hoping my comments will be helpful, maybe more ahead of time. So I'm Jim Kramer, residence of Shark Park since 2008. I was aware of the meeting tonight and I was very pleased that the Water District was getting a new headquarters. But I did not know that parts of it were controversial, the proposal were controversial, until I received a call from them today. I apologize that I've not had time to review all the materials. Maybe I will now. I'm a frequent dedicated client for recycled water, so I appreciated them reaching out. My comments relate to the drive-through water recycling aspect. Water is such a precious resource. I trap rainwater in a 5,000 gallon cistern in my house for landscaping, and I still rely on the recycling program after that water's gone. I'm sure you appreciate that encouraging recycling and making it more convenient to the community must be a very high priority. I was delighted to hear the Water District's plans from March 22, 2022, to change the layout so citizens will have drive-through access to that precious water, longer hours and more days, and saving staff time. I really support this for personal and citywide reasons. And I can say with confidence that operating the pump nozzle is something that citizens can do by themselves. However, based on what I hear, there seems to have been a breakdown in effective communication between planning staff and Water District staff working on the plans. I understand that the recommendations from engineering were delayed in reaching the Water District and that the district staff's attempts to respond went unanswered, though I accept that this was almost certainly because all city staff are undeniably overworked. I understand that traffic issues are real, I know, but signage and clear guidance to drivers can make it safe. Or maybe there are other creative fixes. After all, this won't have traffic like Highway 1 midday last Saturday and Sunday, as some of you saw. And buses are stopped there only a few minutes an hour. Respectfully, may I suggest that failure to reach a compromise is not acceptable. The Water District is an important arm of city government, just like the Planning Department. Both of you have a mission to serve the city residents. You should share that goal. Pacifica is fortunate to have luxury, have the luxury of abundant recycled water. Facilitating efficient use of water, especially through this service, plays the role of public education, making a statement, as well as serving the needs of conscientious water users. So I encourage you to work on this further with the Water District, now especially because you have time. Together, I'm certain that you can allow changes that can support, that they can support in response to the valid engineering and traffic flow concerns. They say they are ready and willing to do this, which will encourage increased use of recycled water. And it is underutilized now, but your appropriate response is to fix that and facilitate convenient drive-through access. Thank you. And if I have time, I'll say I really appreciate having the meetings, hybrid meetings, so I can be here on Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other call-in comments?
We do have another caller, Allison Thompson. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm Allison Thompson. I live in Fairway on Seaside Drive. And I just wanted to express my concern and hoping that you guys can, in the future, address an issue that has become increasingly one of concern for me. And that would be the fact that people are allowed to come into our little neighborhood in Freely Park like crazy. To see beautiful Maury Point, which I understand why they would want to see it. I do like living here. But we have a traffic hazard going on and we have a situation where we are about to be really, let's, let me put it this way, trapped, right? We're already kind of trapped in our neighborhood. And if there's a tsunami or a fire, just to get all of the people that live here out of this neighborhood safely is going to take, you know, effort. But when we've got thousands of extra people coming in and parking and blocking our houses and all that kind of stuff, it's a major hazard. And so I'm just requesting that you guys would address it before it becomes a catastrophe. Because, you know, I know that you guys really care about the residents of our beautiful city and want to keep us safe. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other call-in comments?
There are no other callers at this time.
All right, I will close the oral communications portion. And before moving on, there were a couple questions and I'm wondering if staff can give some updates on the quarry recommendation, or the quarry reclamation plan? I think some of the questions that the public commenter asked were, was there a public hearing on the draft? And will a future new EIR be required when a future development project comes along? And who determines whether reclamation of the quarry is needed?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. We'll need to confine any specific discussion of the quarry reclamation plan to the public hearing on that item. That is currently intended to occur and is scheduled for June 5th. The public notice for that will be going out relatively soon. I will say generally that the law does not require public hearings on environmental impact reports. And so the city has not, as a matter of practice, held public hearings on draft EIRs. The public hearing process that occurs on the permits for a project is the moment where there is, in effect, a public hearing where comments can be made on an environmental document, including an EIR. And so the public had a written public, the public has a written public comment opportunity on environmental documents. And then assuming that the environmental review is done for permits that require public hearings themselves, they have an additional opportunity to provide public comment on the environmental documents at that point in time.
Thank you. And then also just a reminder that staff has been collecting public comments as they come in over email or written comments, so please feel free to submit your comments to staff at any point in time before the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent items, we have none. Consideration items. Our first consideration item is consideration of the annual report to City Council for calendar year 2022. Recommended SEQA action is not applicable. Recommended action is approve the annual report and discuss the presentation to City Council, including identification of a commission representative or multiple representatives. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Honorable Commissioners and Planning Director Christian Murdock. As outlined in more detail in the staff report, the City Council requires that commissions and committees prepare annual reports on their activities for the preceding year and to present those annual reports to a meeting of the City Council, in this case to be held at 5:00 PM on Monday, June 12th. That's a consolidated opportunity for all commissions and committees to present their annual reports. And so in addition to discussing the draft report prepared by staff, that's an attachment to the staff report, the commission hopefully will provide feedback and input on that report and then select one or more commissioners who can attend that meeting on June 12th at 5:00 PM to represent the Planning Commission and to make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Murdock. Are there any commission questions for this item? Commissioner Hauser.
You know, as I'm saying this, I don't have a question, I have comments. I'll wait till after.
You'll wait, okay.
Sorry.
Any clarification questions? I do have one. Mr. Murdock, is virtual, I believe last year there was virtual attendance for the presentation. Is virtual attendance allowed for the commissioner or commissioners who choose to present to City Council? Can they present virtually or do they have to come in person?
It's a difficult question for me to answer. Certainly, the technology exists for remote participation, as our public commenters have demonstrated. And in terms of direct staff-type presentations, we have made that opportunity available at City Council in previous instances. I would say my understanding and in my judgment, the intention is for the presentations by the commissioners and committee members to be in person. And so I don't know that I have the ability to say a commissioner or a committee member can attend and present remotely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then I will open public comment for this agenda item. I do not have any comment cards. Are there any call-in comments?
There are no call-in comments.
I will give a couple of seconds in case there's a delay. Still none. All right, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to commission for question, or for deliberation and comments.
Thank you, Chair. So I know, I really appreciate, you know, staff putting the information together. It's nice to see that we moved up a little over last year. I think what would be really helpful is adding a column that shows essentially what, what numbers of units, square footage, et cetera, that were brought to the commission versus what was approved, to provide a frame of reference. So for example, you know, if there were 23 new residential dwelling units that were brought and only 21 were approved, that's, you know, a more, that's helpful rather than recognizing like 500 that were brought and 21 that were approved. I think there's just a big question mark there. So that's one of the things that I would like to see before June. And then the other one, you know, through maybe a footnote or something, would be to kind of identify where the commercial area and the new residential spaces kind of came from. So if specific projects, you know. So if specific projects, you know, with only 21, I think that is probably pretty doable. So I don't know, Mr. Murdock, if that works for you. I know I had emailed my questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. Certainly, adding the column about the number of units brought to the commission is workable. And currently, with the level of development activity that comes to the commission, I think we do have the ability to strike the balance and put the specific project locations. Perhaps as a footnote or in a bulleted list, I'll figure out the most efficient way to do that. And similarly, with the commercial or mixed-use projects, there's relatively few of those at this point in time.
Great.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. I also want to support Vice Chair Hauser's comments. Any other comments? Looking for volunteers, I am happy to participate, and I can participate in person on June 12 at 5. Vice Chair Hauser.
I can also participate, but if we're limiting the amount and other people want to, happy to discuss who it is. But if we don't have volunteers, I'm happy to do it.
Is it okay for commissioners to come as an observer as opposed to a participant?
I'd imagine so. Mr. Murdock, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to clarify, there's no Brown Act reason that less than a quorum of the Planning Commission needs to be at the study session. It is a noticed meeting of another legislative body. And so the entire Planning Commission can be there. If more than a quorum is present, it's good not to sit together until the item is called and you're there to present, and certainly not to discuss business that's not on the agenda. But otherwise, more than three Planning Commissioners can participate. And someone can be there, you know, not in their official capacity and observe as a member of the public as well.
Thank you. So we'd be happy to have you, if you want to come and be a bystander. Any other comments? All right, so we have two commissioners that will be presenting, myself and Vice Chair Hauser. And we happily welcome any other commissioners to come and support. So looking for a motion? Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. So with the edit points that we discussed, I would make... Let me go to the actual wording of the motion. I would make a motion to approve the annual report and discuss the presentation to City Council, including identification of a commission representative or commission representatives.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Our second consideration item tonight is the annual reorganization of Planning Commission. The recommended SEQA action is not applicable. Recommended action is nominate Planning Commissioners to be elected as Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Staff report, if there is one? I know it's self-explanatory, but...
Thank you, Chair. Good evening again, Commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. The Planning Commission bylaws require the Planning Commission to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair. That reorganization is supposed to occur annually at the first meeting in April. Staff wasn't able to prepare the item at the first meeting in April as intended, but we have prepared the item tonight. And so we could have a single motion with a recommendation for the Chair and Vice Chair, or separate motions if that helps facilitate the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the commission before we go on to public comment? All right, no questions. I'll open up public comment on this. Seeing no commenters in person, I'm wondering if there's any online?
There are no call-in commenters at this time.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment period for this item and bring it back to the commission for deliberation or a motion. Commissioner Wright.
Can I make a motion that we keep the status quo in place?
I think that's an acceptable motion. However, I have a different motion. I actually would like to move that Vice Chair Hauser become Chair. She's been just so extraordinary this past year with all of our work on the general plan update, the Sharp Park specific plan. Just every meeting, I've been so impressed with your participation and your full effort. And you've also, of course, run a few meetings, which you've done a stellar job. So I would like to nominate Vice Chair Hauser as the next Chair. No other... Commissioner Wright.
Can I second your motion, even though I made my own?
You absolutely can. And we could take that as a separate voting item from Vice Chair, which I also will have a motion for. Would you like to... So we have a motion and a second for nominating Commissioner Hauser as the Chair. Please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Can I say something really quickly? I really appreciate it. I appreciate how much work Chair Berman has done. I know it's a lot of work. So thank you for keeping us going.
I try, thank you. So moving on... No, I think that was a leftover light. So now for Vice Chair, I actually would like to nominate Commissioner Leal to serve as our Vice Chair. I think you've done also a wonderful job on the commission. And it would be lovely to see you as Vice Chair. And I know that you work really well with Commissioner Hauser. So I think you'd be a really dynamic duo.
Well, I will second that, as long as Commissioner Leal is happy with the motion. So I officially second that.
So we have a motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, congratulations, future Chair Hauser and Vice Chair Leal. And so we do not have a new public hearing tonight because that item has been pulled. So moving on to commission communications. Are there any commission communications? So I have one item. I wanted to let the public know that coming in June, on June 3, there is going to be another annual Pacifica Pride Festival. For those who participated last year, you know that there was a really fun parade. There was a lot of activity on Palmetto and Sharp Park. Well, this year, there's been a task force that has worked really hard on creating a lovely day for Pacifica Pride on June 3. And it's going to kick off with a parade, which will be both a car parade and a walking parade along Palmetto in the Sharp Park area. And that starts at 11:00 a.m. You could see me driving my Jeep, which will be dressed as a Pegasus. So if anything, just come for that. And then after the parade, there's going to be a festival at Ingrid B. Lacy School. And that festival is going to run from 11:30 to 2:30. And there's going to be food trucks, live music and performers. There will be pop-up booths from local community groups. And it's really going to be a fun time. And it's, of course, family-friendly. After the festival ends, there are also going to be several after-parties at different local businesses. You could find out more about that by inquiring at your local business. There's going to be flyers in front of storefronts. You could also look at coastpride.org for more information. And also, if you're interested in volunteering, the task force is still taking volunteers for the day of event. And you could also sign up on coastpride.org and go to Events, and then go to Pacifica Pride. At that location, you could volunteer, you could donate, you could learn more about the day's events and schedule. And I hope to see you all there. Thank you. Any other commission communications? Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask staff, since it was announced so publicly last week in Connect with Pacifica, if staff could give a brief update on the housing element.
I think staff will probably give that update during staff communications. Okay. Any other commission... Oh, that was you.
Would it be possible to just make a comment to my fellow commissioners about Item 3 during this time? Is this an appropriate time?
Are we allowed to discuss the item that was pulled from the agenda?
It would be advisable to not discuss the item.
Okay.
But it's not.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no other... Oh, Commissioner Wright.
One more, just quick comment. Being a parent of a daughter, only child, it has been a pleasure having you to lead us for the time that I've been here and the example that that has set for them in terms of what is possible for women in position of power and the level of professionalism that you guys both have exhibited throughout the whole process. It really has been a pleasure working with you. I wish I was as competent as you. I'm striving to get there. But it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. It's been so fun working with you. And I'm so happy to have been reappointed and to have four more years on the commission where we get to collaborate more together. All right, I'll move on to staff communications.
Good evening, Commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. I do want to note that I'll get to a housing element update in a moment. It wasn't really my opportunity during the agenda item to make mention of it, but in preparing the annual report, I reflected on the commission's significant contributions to the city in 2022 with its work on the general plan update and Sharp Park specific plan. And so it's been mentioned already, but I do want to express my sincere appreciation for all the hard work, you know, all the preparations and all of the significant improvements that you made to those documents as they wand their way through the public process. So thank you so much for that, again. I do want to announce what I've shared via email with the commissioners, which is an upcoming Planning Commissioner training opportunity on Wednesday, May 31 at 6:00 p.m. at the San Mateo Library. Several commissioners have indicated they've signed up. Thank you for that. If anyone else is interested and able to attend, please do sign up at your earliest opportunity. And then with respect to the housing element update, which is underway here in the city, I am excited to report that last week I transmitted an updated draft housing element to the California Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD. That draft was updated with a number of inputs from the City Council and Planning Commission at the joint study session, as well as to reflect many public comments that we received. The public can review that updated draft on planpacifica.org. We are currently in a 90-day public review, or rather, HCD review and comment period on the document, and we anticipate receiving their comments no later than August 8. To be, you know, modest and anticipating what might be coming, you know, many jurisdictions have received extensive comment letters, and so much work is likely to remain. But I'm hopeful that we have done a good job as a community preparing that draft. And so we look forward to whatever the state's comments will be at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work getting it in. I know there's been a lot.
I too would like to just appreciate how much they have accomplished in light of how much staff turnover we've had as well. And it's been really impressive, the quality, the volume with short staff. And I don't think that the people at Pacifica understand how dedicated and how much these people have done in order to make things like the housing element, not to mention that other list of things that we went through this year. Thank you.
I want to echo my fellow commissioners. The past couple of years have been a doozy for the just municipalities in general, but also the public hearing process. And our staff has pivoted so much, just as quickly as possible, whenever needed. And we've accomplished so much just from the hard work of Mr. Murdock and Deepa and your teams. So it's really impressive how much the city has gone through this year and has, you know, over the past couple of years, how much the city has accomplished. So really, that's a testament to how great of a team you both have and your hard work. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
All right. Before we move on to adjournment, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. So with that said, is there a motion to adjourn? Vice Chair Hauser.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Leal.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Good night, everyone.